Or released to a, a, uh, rescue type agency, or a lot of them will be euthanized. Now during that seven day period, anybody who lost a pet can come and claim their pet. If they can show that they have that pet, we're asking, we would ask the board to charge them twenty dollars a day for the care and treatment of that pet. While they were in there and we would have to release them before the Humane Society could give the animal back to the owner.
So David, after that seven days, my question would be, do we incur any cost for that animal after that?
That's built in.
I, I think the way we drafted it Commissioner, and it's a proposal that, that as yet has not been accepted. But the idea is at the end of that seventh day, we wouldn't incur another dime of expense for that animal. It would come out of our custody one way or the other on, on what we referred to as final disposition. And there would be a figure attached to that animal for that week. I think the number we have now is two hundred or two hundred and forty dollars. But that number contemplates costs of that animal. If the Humane Society decides to take the animal and put it into its adoption population, or if disposition is to a, a rescue that comes and picks the animal up, the Humane Society would still get paid as if the animal were euthanized. So you set a flat fee, you say if you, if we, any animal that has to be held the entire week, the Humane Society would get paid that flat fee. If the animal's held for less than that entire week, then there's a per day charge, which again, we would pass on to the citizen who comes and picks up their animal. They come pick up the animal on the fifth day, the daily charge times five. That way, the citizen who was negligent and allowed their animal to be picked up for whatever reason is, is bearing the cost rather than the, all the citizens that account.
So David, the three seventy-five that we talked about, is that, is this bill guaranteed not to exceed that in a year, or?
Yeah, I mean, that's what they're asking for. They're asking for three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. If you add that to our.
So we wouldn't be, if we done that, we wouldn't be breaking down the cost per animal?
We would still track it so that at the end of the year, you would know how you're doing. Yes, we would still track it, but we would just pay.
What's the number, what's the number we had paid them for?
We're currently paying them four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a month, or a year.
So it's a. Pretty much means their budget for.
About a hundred and twenty-five, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less.
So our cost of personnel will be roughly slightly under three hundred thousand, based on current staffing projections.
So basically, we're looking at, my vote calls seven hundred thousand a year for animals.
Seven to eight hundred thousand. You'll have an initial upfront capital cost of moving the portable building, setting it up, getting up to electric water, putting in handicap parking, ramp. We estimate that to be about seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars. As compared to Kevin, what was the latest cost on the, uh, building a shelter?
We, we can't do it, we can't do it in, in, in less expenses than that. We get in, try to provide that same service, it's gonna cost us more, more than that.
And here's the thing too, and I, I've thought about this and looked at it. We're going, e- even if this don't work out with the animal control, for, we're gonna need that year to build a facility and everything anyway, so we'll know pretty quick if this deal, if, if, if we need to get started on a facility. Go ahead, Mr. Kirby.
Where David's going with this, and I strongly recommend us take that trial period because once you, if you go the other route with all the construction and whatnot, you're committed. Based on our research of counties like and similar in size to us, that's an eight hundred thousand dollar reoccurring cost. If you're standalone. Society, just based on the math. We had a staff member doing a very detailed report, picture backup material, and they entered their number. And we're bringing you at it, so they're good at it. So I, I would think ours would even exceed that for a little bit till we figured it out.
You got the upfront cost of building the facility on top of that eight hundred thousand.
And that might be wasted money because you might decide to get out there and business, you don't, you don't know.
I'm definitely of the opinion you're gonna be north of three hundred thousand if, just in capital. If you go the other route. Like I say, I think the only reasonable approach, David and I have discussed this a lot, is to give it a shot. I mean, the worst thing that could happen is we have to go the other route at some point.
David, my question too would be, if somebody had, had a, uh, say somebody had an emergency with a vicious dog, are they gonna be able to call nine one one?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we will route that through nine one one?
So we will have several options. There will be an on-call person at all times. And that on-call will be rotated just like we do at the Public Works Department. So for those non-emergency type situations, people can call the non-emergency number. But anytime you have something like a dog bite, you wanna call nine one one because you have to get the ambulance out there, the paramedics out there and all that stuff.
And, and I think mainly the breakdown was, I don't think they had enough people, but the biggest breakdown was communication. So nine one one, you gonna get somebody. And that's what matters to me. I know how important nine one one is because I've been in the middle of much nine one one situations. And when you call, that's a warm fuzzy feeling when you know somebody's coming.
And even on the non-emergency line, it's just like with the Public Works line, it's worked for years.
Right.
We always call everybody back. They always find out what happened and they get a disposition.
Mr. Chairman, we, we've got a bulletproof system. What our goal is, the way I look at it is if you, you're simply using the Humane Society as a roof. It's your staff, your on-call people, nine one one. I just, if we can get beyond the price difference, I think it's the smartest way to go. And we've put a lot of thought into it. There's just no negatives to it. I feel very comfortable, Commissioner Owensorth, I witnessed something, uh, last week, we were looking at something. Another event sprouted to this event. And it's right there where we had an employee kinda helping with something, how many times? Multiple times. You, you can't, it's hard to communicate with the enforcement side as it is now.
Yeah.
They just don't, they don't respond. Now, we witnessed that firsthand. They're sitting here saying to people at the podium, this was an employee of ours.
I called him myself.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's just, it, it's just, the system's just flawed and, 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 you know.
So therefore, we're doing what we're doing. But once again, David and I run the numbers every which way, if you jump out there, standalone, build kennels at Public Works, what, all that, I think the first year you get into all that, you're gonna be way over a million bucks. And then you have a reoccurring cost of a minimum of eight hundred thousand.
Now, the three seventy-five, David, you said that would be straight up every year. Now, are they charging us per day for animal after the three seventy-five? That's three seventy-five incurred, correct?
Yes.
Regardless of how many animals we take out there.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, so if you run that math, we're of the opinion it's gonna be about three hundred thousand a year if we stay there and do that. So in my opinion, you're around six seventy-five versus maybe north of an eight, plus the capital investment.
Now Kevin, where is this portable going, where would the portable go?
So you know where the Humane Society is today? They, they picked out a spot. What David was explaining a while ago, we would set it up, it's currently the kindergarten center, and the school board donated it to us. So all we got is the cost of proof. Yes, sir. We'll move, if, if we so, go this way, we'll move the portable over there. For lack of a better word, build a small holding kennel for after hours and weekends, right? So in my opinion, the way it would work, just like Public Works, you got your employees. For seven days at a time, they'll be on-call, just like Public Works. There'll be a separate telephone they pass around. That will be, of course, you have a secretary in the portable, Monday through Friday, normal work hours. You know, nine one one, all that dispatches, then after hours, the phone rings, they take care of it, they use the portable pin, which is right there adjacent to the Humane Society, and then the next morning, they shift the animal from point A to point B.
So, so, uh, David or Kevin, anyone answer a question? Oh. Now, we're, we're, we, we titled it, on here you got animal control. I know before we looked at animal enforcement. Now let's talk about what we're actually going to be doing.
So our thought was rela- relabeling it animal enforcement. To emphasize our job is to enforce the law. Our job isn't to do trap neuter release, our job isn't to do all this other stuff that the animal shelter does. Our job is just to enforce the law. Vicious animals, aggressive animals, stray animals, whatever the law states, that's what we're gonna enforce. If it's not that, then it's, you need to go to the Humane Society. So if you wanna surrender your animal, or if you, um, want vet treatment or whatever, you would not be coming to us. We are strictly an enforcement, kinda like the sheriff's office. We are there to enforce the law.
So we, so we just need to make, we need to make that clear, you know, to the, to the, uh.
And they will be dressed as officers.
They'll have their own uniform. Let me ask you this. As we're going, are we gonna track this financially with them? Have them send us reports on what we're doing every month and, you know what I mean, or maybe every quarter?
Yes, we'll be tracking all the animals.
I'm talking about the money. The money, what's being spent, okay. And the animals, we need both, you, you're right.
So, cause at the end of the year, you're gonna say, based on the intake, was that a good number?
We'll have a track on animals, cause we're the ones that be picking the animals up and taking them to the Humane Society.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Owensorth is actually talking.
When they take care of them, how long they take?
We'll know how that three seventy-five worked out with the animals we took in. By, on the rate that they charged us.
Once they take over the animal, we're still gonna wanna track the animal because we wanna know how many days it was held. So that when we issue the fine, we know how much twenty dollars a day is, where I know how, what the disposition was. So at the end of the year, we can tell you we had X number of animals, so many dogs, so many cats. This is what happened to each of them. This is what the cost would have been if we went by a per animal basis. This is the cost of what you spent overall with the Humane Society.
Okay.
That would include vet costs.
But after that seven days, the dog is no longer gonna be on our tracking system.
Correct.
Because that's, that's the end of, okay. All right, I just wanna make sure.
But I, I do like the set amount. That way we can budget it a lot better, so, yeah.
Towards the end of the year, mid-year, you'll know how you're tracking in terms of intake versus, intake and outcomes versus what you budgeted for the total for the contract.
Mr. Chairman, let's talk, let's talk a little about, uh, the city of Lake City and, uh, what we asked them, uh, on Tuesday night to possibly enter into a contract with the county instead of, uh, the Humane Society on animal control within the city of Lake City. David, you got any thoughts on that? How much, how much are they paying the animal shelter per year?
I don't wanna speak for the animal shelter, but I think they have a three-year contract worth about a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
But, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I read that contract, it sounds like to me that contract, the way I read it, is renegotiated every year. Is that, is that the way you read it?
It's exactly like ours. I mean, if, if it's something the city wants to explore, then we can explore it with them.
Right, that's what I said, that's what I, that's the way I read it too.
But you're right, Rocky, I, when I glanced over it, it looked like it was every year. It was annual review, so to speak.
Yeah. So, so basically, they're not locked in to a three-year contract. It don't look like to me, uh, that's the way I interpret it anyway. I'm not a lawyer by any means, don't, don't claim to be, but that's the way I would interpret it if I, if I was reading that contract.
Well, we'll, I mean, we'll certainly have to defer to Mr. Cannon and, and his opinion on that, but, you know, it, it, in terms of efficiency and, and whether or not it makes sense, I think those are conversations that need to happen.
But it, it would make it a lot cleaner if we had the whole county.
Dispatch, for dispatch, because it's just saying you don't know where they're at really, yeah. Yeah, it would, it would definitely be a more efficient operation of animal control for one agency to do the whole county than trying to figure out if you're in the city, if you're in the county, or that's, that's just a waste of, waste a bunch of time, a lot of time. And then a lot of times, they'll go all the way out there and then realize they're in the city and not the county, so it's just.
And to that point, uh, Mr. Foreman wrote our contracts for the town of Fort White, where we do it for the town of Fort White. So adding in another jurisdiction wouldn't be difficult.
The, uh, the, the, the potential, uh, complicating factor would just be making sure. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Forgot about the mic.
We'll get y'all some mic training. Get y'all some mic training.
Our mics are so much nicer. Aren't our mics awesome?
You're right.
No, the, the only complicating issue, and I've just seen another, is we need to make sure that, you know, our animal control ordinances are, are mirrored or match up really well with what the city does. We don't wanna ask our officers to be trying to enforce, you know, three or four different codes. But again, it, a potential complicating issue is something we can certainly iron out pretty quickly.
I, I, I got one question about their infrastructure. I guess they got this handled, but are they gonna have more places to put dogs, or are they gonna just, I mean, are they gonna build new kennels, or are they gonna be able to handle this, you think? Or we're not worried about that, we just hope they can. Because I know they're packed all the time is what they tell me, so we're gonna pick up more dogs than they did.
But if they, and of course, that's up to them after the seven days, but it's packed for a reason, you know, because when you read the numbers, I, I don't know who sent it, was that you Kevin? You did research on Putnam County and a couple more of them. You, you read the numbers and talked to a couple of them at Clay County, it's all about how you handle that number.
Right.
Am I correct? The statute reads three days before euthanization.
That's the way I understand it.
Okay, and then, but this is jumping to seven.
There's three days and we're doing more than double that, because I don't want anybody's dog to die, you know?
But, but when you, Commissioner, when you reach out to some of these other counties and do a little bit of research, they all do about seven to ten days. You know, so it's, you know.
Three days is a little quick to me, because you got an older lady that doesn't realize.
Be on vacation and I had an incident today, the young lady, uh, Joanna, uh, out at the animal control, she was very, very helpful, super knowledgeable. She goes, I'm gonna forward this email to you commissioners and staff. Uh, but ran into an issue about tethering. You know, where a particular animal broke loose and basically killed another animal last week, uh, Friday, I think it was Saturday. But anyway, I'm not gonna get into detail, but it, it was, uh, this, this young lady who she may be, she was very, very helpful and educated me on this tethering law. I didn't realize there was, there was such thing, so anyway.
So going back to the nine one one thing, if somebody called nine one one now, they will get the shelter. But when, when we take it over,
nine one one does no animal control calls at this time?
Uh, well, they don't any at this time, okay, so. So once we get it taken over, then we will get the calls, even in the city, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's to be determined, in terms of in the city.
City may or may not.
What I can tell you is, if someone were to call nine one one for a non-emergency animal call, it'd be just like somebody calling nine one one and saying, a tree fell. They're gonna immediately just send it over to the on-call person, and the on-call person would handle it.
Is that even to date now?
That's how we do the, uh, Public Works line.
Well, I, I would, I understood at the meeting that they don't handle emergency, uh, animal control calls right now.
No, I'm talking about when we take this step.
Oh, when we take this step?
We're gonna treat nine, animal control calls just as we do Public Works calls. But if it's a nine one, if it's truly a nine one one and we have to send fire and rescue, or if we have to send EMS, it's a nine one one call. And it'll be treated just like every other nine one one call.
But if an individual calls from wherever in the county and says, nine one one, I've been bit by a dog or something like, yeah, they're gonna send the response of, of course, they're gonna send, uh, SO along with animal control at that time. And, uh, you know.
But, but when you go to that nine one one and call it and we all in the same pot, city and us, and this, and it, and the dog belongs in the city, how you gonna identify that dog in the city by the address?
The problem with dogs are they don't stay in their address, so and that's one of the problems we have is.
Wherever the incident is at, phone street, phone street's in the city, they know that. I mean, this, this isn't like people getting shot. This is, this is about dogs, so I don't think, I, I know that we, we're consolidating the nine one one center and, you know, there's a call down, a drop down thing. With dogs, that's okay, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out.
But that scenario Mr. Phillips just brought up is the exact reason why it would be so much more efficient.
We want the city.
Agency to handle all animal control.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I called nine one one last Saturday night and the lady did not know where three forty-nine and four forty-one were. So, there you go.
Well, and, um, Ms. River came here when she had her complaint. It was about a dog, it was near the, was it Save and Shop, Stop and Save? And she, the person calling in the complaint didn't know if it was in the city or not. So, I mean, you're gonna run into that.
Okay.
As long as the city and county are two separate agencies.
Well, well, we need to work hard to eliminate that.
Right.
Where we are the animal control for the whole county.
I agree, though.
Then we eliminate a lot of, a lot of misinformation there, that's.
And, and I guess.
Same with consolidating nine one one. It'll be so much more efficient once we do that. Once we get that done, so.
Chairman, if, if, I guess if the city did come in, we can monitor what the city's cost to us is also, so that we can navigate what that should be the next year. We're having to kinda do this off the chain, so we don't know what we're gonna run into. Maybe a lot of calls in the city, I don't know, but.
But all the times the Humane Society has been present to our meetings, I can't imagine them uh, fighting and say, hey, I wanna keep animal control in the city, not the county, you know, you know what I mean? It's just a, cause they all tell me all the dog problems are down in Fort White, so we're gonna put that on Rocky.
Yeah, we need to charge a little extra to that distance down there.
Take them all running to Dixie Street.
No, they already done, they already dumped all the cats there, so don't do that, okay?
Hey, listen, we'll get Rocky a uniform, get him a little truck.
Get him a truck about a month ago, start up.
Hey, when I get a call from Fort White, I call, I tell them, call Rocky.
Call Rocky, there you go.
I'll take care of it, boys, don't worry about it.
Don't bring it to Railroad Street tomorrow, we got plenty of them down there.
And we could negotiate a mutual aid agreement on animal control with the city so that that could resolve some of those issues as well.
Yes. Yeah, and, and, and I, I would, like I say, I, I think we should probably start talking to them about that at some point, pretty soon.
Well, we, we need, we need to authorize, uh, David and Joe to get with the city and see what they can work out on this, so we, we'll have a, a clean slate.
We, we just need direction and consensus, correct, Joe?
Yeah.
I think y'all pretty well, I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah, we can't take any votes, it's a workshop.
No, but, but we will certainly, based on Tuesday night's conversations and then the additional conversations here, have some.
David, I, I appreciate, I appreciate yours and Kevin's work on this, and, and I know Stash helped, so I'm with it too, doing some research. Uh, I, and, and I agree with y'all, this is the best approach right now. And we can see how it works. Maybe over the next, once we, once it goes into effect, we can see how it worked for four or five months and, uh, if we see some issues with it, uh, you know, we can, we can always adapt a little bit or change whatever. A lot of times a plan needs some minor tweaking here and there or something, but I think this is the best approach to move forward at this time, so.
I agree.
Yeah. Anybody, everybody agree on that?
Yes. I do.
Like I say, that we, we're gonna need some time to build a facility anyway. If it works out, we have to build a facility, but I hope this, I hope this works out with the Humane Society, because I, I really like the idea of providing them some funding to operate inside the county, because they, a lot of other things they do do as far as picking up strays and stuff like that, so. Oh. Anybody else got anything to add on animal control?
Uh, David, on, on your animal control officers, you'll have a officer on-call on the weekend. On twenty-four, seven days, seven days.
Twenty-four, seven.
Yeah, always.
Twenty-four, seven. It's just like the Public Works on-call. You know, Kevin rotates that phone, there's always somebody that's gonna answer that phone, seven days a week. In fact, we're, we're just stealing everything from Kevin.
And you, you'll rotate your correction, I mean, not your correction officer, your, your, uh, uh, enforcement officers for animal control, you'll rotate them weekend on all duties.
Yes, sir. You know, it's every seven days, the one phone, right? One number. Just like in Public Works, you got one phone. And seven people rotate that phone, right? Nine one one's got the list, we do it quarterly. They know exactly, everybody, it's worked great for fifteen years at Public Works. And we, as David indicated, we're just mirroring that with animal control.
Okay. Everybody, everybody good with that?
Good.
Good.
All right, well, let's move on to recreation. The reason this kinda got on, on, on the radar to start with was we've had, we, we, we've got a lot of five oh one C threes set up in the county. I talked to Clint about this, he kinda oversees that. Girls, you got girls softball, you got Fort White boys baseball, you got, uh, girls softball, you got several five oh one C threes. Oh. I don't know the answer to it, but when the, every time, every time these boards change uh, presidents and vice presidents and all, there's always the accusations of several thousand dollars going missing. And, and it ain't just started with my girls played, uh, when my girls played softball down in Fort White fifteen years ago, there was accusations then, I mean. And I, I, I don't know the answer, but I had talked to David, uh, about some things that we might could do as far as the concession stands. I mean, that's, that's mostly where they generate their money in concession stands. Uh, maybe we could go cashless on the concession stands. The money gets deposited in one account. Earmark for girl, whatever, whatever league is running that concession stand. Uh, the money that we contribute to, uh, the, the football, Fort White football, Fort White baseball, we contribute uh, so much a year, we have budgeted for, for the sponsor of those programs. Uh, but I'd like, I, I mean, my idea is one account handling it all, and then the county pays the invoices. Anybody have any thoughts on that? I, I mean, I'm just kinda trying to figure out a way that the money can be more accountable. And the, and the people are, the people that run these five oh one C threes are, are not basically on the hook for getting accusations of money going missing and stuff like, and, and I think everybody agrees, this is something that happens every year, every year.
I, 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 uh, uh, Mr. Ford, you're right, uh, I, 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 I won't, uh, ever forget, uh, soccer. Uh, that was a, a big fiasco. Not only was money missing, equipment, lawn mowers, weed eaters, you name it, you couldn't find it. And, and it takes place when that transition from one group that kids is no longer involved in it and, and they are gone, and a new group comes in. And I, I thought there was somewhere, David, that, that before they got money out the next year's budget, out the, out the future budget, next year's budget, they had, they had to be ordered. Then we agreed to do that.
Commissioner Williams, I, I will just ask, I'll, I'll tell you. Most of the ones you have problems with don't turn in any financial records and they never, they never come get their money.
Well, they shouldn't get any money. If it's girls softball, boys baseball, soccer, whatever.
They don't come get the money.
They shouldn't get, they shouldn't get any money.
They don't, they don't. They don't. They just, they just use their own money and then they run off with the money. So they don't even get county money. I don't, I think they do that for a reason.
Well, when you're.
They don't keep your financial records, so they don't have anything turned in.
And they're working, they're getting the money and working it, so it's not costing the county money, but it, it.
But when you generate on a tournament as such, and I'm not exactly sharing the numbers, but, uh, myself and Clint has definitely been involved in this over the years, me on the private sector, of course, but, you know, back in the day when I was running it, a rookie qualifier, we'd do eighteen thousand dollars worth of sales in the concession stand. You know, that's for basically, what was it, Clint, about four or five days, something like that? You know, that was back then, you know, when my wife was running it.
That's what I'm saying, there's a lot of money goes through these five oh one C threes, a lot of money. We don't realize how much.
So to answer, partially answer your question, if they turn in all their financials to Amy and everything checks out, we issue them checks on a quarterly basis. We just write them a check on a quarterly basis based on a draw. I think what we're saying, and Clint met with us, and Kevin, Clint and I all met, and we felt that that still is just writing them a check and that money goes out there. If the board wants accountability, we, we were recommending we treat it more like a grant and that we would issue the funds more on a reimbursement basis. So they would have to give us invoices and receipts and we would reimburse them, so we know at least where the money was spent. Cause ultimately, their money, they're gonna spend how they spend their money. But this way, at least you do know where your money was spent.
Uh, Joe.
But.
These organizations have a five oh one three C. Which has nothing. These organizations have a five oh one three C, which has nothing to do with the county.
Correct.
They go out and solicit and raise money for that five oh one three C, whether it's for bull riding or whatever. Where, where do the county have an enforcing powers to a five oh one three C which does not have anything to do with the county?
It, it's, it's a bit layered up, so we do have licensing agreements that we enter into with the sports organizations as well as with our community center boards, and we can make it a contractual requirement, right, that, that their money, just something they would have to agree to. Now, when they are a proper not-for-profit, when they declare their status, they say what their purpose is, right? And the IRS, generally, there's some exceptions, but generally, they have to spend their money for whatever their stated purpose is. So if their stated purpose is to provide, uh, you know, little league baseball opportunities for kids in Columbia County, they need to be spending their money for that. Uh, does it mean they necessarily always do? No, and are there exceptions and ways to get around some of that? Yes. I think what has been discussed, uh, by the board, uh, members in, in separate meetings with, with, uh, the administration is how do we make sure that the public's money is being spent for the stated purpose of the organization? What's the best way to do that? And so that's where we came up with this idea that, you know, maybe we make it a reimbursement-only basis, so that the county money is only reimbursed for that, but, but, yeah, it's.
But what I, but what I'm hearing is that they don't come and get the county money.
They don't. Understood, and so the ones that don't come and get county money, you know, we wouldn't get too involved, uh, in that. The other issue that, uh, with the concessions is that it puts us as sort of the front line of defense with the concessions. We keep ourselves compliant with the Health Department, because that's been a major issue, where one legal go out there and put in a piece of equipment that's not been approved or inspected, and then you get a health violation. Well, it's our concession stand, it's the county's concession stand, but somebody else was operating it. We can cure that up by becoming the front line of defense on concessions, and then in terms of any money that might get doled out to those, uh, organizations because the, the concession was being operated in connection with their tournament, we can formulate a profit share. Like, you know, after you get overhead, and after there's a certain level of profit for wherever the vendor is, there's a profit share that goes to whatever organization was putting on the event. That's another way we safeguard that county asset and the revenue it generates against them using the money for improper purposes. Does that all make sense? So there's like different pots of money, and we're trying to figure out the ones that come from county sources, and how can we make sure they're being properly applied? That, that's one of the concerns, and then the next level concern is if we do want to go beyond the county sourced money, we have to do that contractually. So that has to be done through the licensing agreements that we have with the leagues and that we have with the, uh, community center boards.
Because Commissioner Williams, uh, just here recently, when we, uh, agreed upon the, uh, uh, license agreement with all the, uh, community centers, you know, we put that caveat in there. Uh, be, of money generated at that facility stays within that facility, because, uh, the, the, the nine years I was, you know, in direction, myself and Jack Munchen, you remember Jack? Uh, we, we had a, uh, Jack was kind of like, he, he, that's what he does, is manage money, so he, he was pretty tough. We were pretty successful, but I, I don't think the cashless system would work. Just, I'm just imagining how that would, you know, I've been to hundreds of tournaments over the years, you know, you send Johnny all the way across the park, you know, and he's seven years old, go give him a couple of Coca Colas, and he's gonna be divvying out, you know, a debit card, so to speak. But the, uh, but, but I do think uh, there, there's, we created last budget, correct me if I'm wrong, David, uh, this liaison, uh, position within the county to be a oversight, uh, what is the position actually called, David, of the five oh one C threes?
I believe it's just community center coordinator.
Okay.
A liaison or something like that.
Because, you know, one of the drives, in my opinion, for the organizations for the volunteers to volunteer, once they accumulate this money, we'll just say a hundred thousand dollars uh, in concessions, then that group can decide that, uh, Clint was definitely around when we started, when we, uh, started building batting cages in the day, you know, it gives the volunteers an incentive to improve their complex and put their mark on it, if you want to say. And, uh, and you know, and heck, you, you know the things that, uh, remember when rents come to us, Ron, out there at Winfield, when we helped on the, uh, what was it, swing set or something, but anyway, there was, you know what I'm saying? But, but the, the volunteers and the people participating in that five oh one C three, it gives them the initiative to go on. But what Clint's, uh, somebody alluded to what Clint said, Clint's a hundred percent right, because they don't come get this money, because there is a pile, people don't have a clue how much money is out there, there's a bunch of it. And, uh, but, but what I'm saying is that that person, there's enough work, in my opinion, I don't know if it's forty hour week, uh, job, but it's, there's enough person for that liaison to have a, a workshop like we're doing here today, that when all these five oh one C threes coming, that's what's so important, in Tim Murphy's opinion, that everybody needs to be a five oh one C three, because they're held accountable on the federal level, they're held accountable on a state level, and they're also held accountable on the local level. So with that being said, and it gives that parent, that aunt, grandma, or whatever, the initiative to be a part of what's going on in that organization. Then when they get old, like I did, they move on and somebody else steps in their place, and, uh, but it's a, it's a big deal, it's nothing that Clint deserves to have thrown upon him with everything else that's on him. I mean, this is a, uh, not saying that Clint couldn't do it, because he could, but, uh, you know, Clint, that's the reason why we got the reputation we got at Southside, is because of the direction that he and his staff has taken over the last fifteen, twenty years. But my point is, is that that person could be in place, and it works from one end of this county to the other, that all the boxes are checked, and then you're gonna be coming down here to do that, and then that way, when they don't fulfill, you go over there and you put your lock on that concession stand, because if that concession stand ain't operating, that place ain't operating. And that, you've got control of it then, but it's gotta be one to go-to person, and, uh, and somebody asked me one time, well dang, you're gonna have somebody working at eight, nine o'clock at night? No, 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 because there's always gonna be a director, you know, that runs that particular concessions, uh, this particular whatever, you know, so that's why, in my opinion, the five oh one C threes, they, have they ran perfect? Absolutely not. But is there, uh, is there guidelines there to, uh, uh, be an authoritative figure that liaisons over there, because that person needs to be in between the five oh one C threes, and, and when I say that.
Correct, all community centers are five oh one C three for the most part, right?
Because I have, same, I'm, I'm, I bugger regular, hey, is this and the other stuff turning, you know, I'm just trying to build a, a trail and, and of course, you, you can't make these people do, but I can tell you, when the gate, when the lock goes on the gate, they, they're gonna get serious, you know, when you got a hundred and fifty cars sitting out there ready to play baseball, and the gate's locked because somebody didn't fulfill their obligation, you see. But, but Clint, uh, am I saying anything? We, you haven't experienced Clint, I mean, i- it's, it's, it's I, I love Clint's input, because he's got a lot of knowledge on this stuff, and I ain't trying to put you on the spot, Clint, but.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta hang our hat on your knowledge.
But Tim, our, our, our community centers, the five oh one three C, they have to report back to the board. They, they have to go through an audit.
A- absolutely, and, and, and the baseballs are imposed too, I say, Ron.
My point is, why don't all, uh, five oh one three C, if they, if they're dealing in county equipment, buildings, and equipment of, on the football field, or baseball field, or soccer field, that belongs to the county, that should lock them out, having to follow the same guideline that community centers have.
Absolutely, Ron, and, and, and Ron, you're exact, we don't, we have not been enforcing that. No, nothing against anybody here, we just haven't had a process in place in all these years to enforce that.
Maybe.
Rocky made a good point the other day, when I was, uh, overheard him talking to somebody, you know, when the, when the entity, when the the guard changes, if you want to say, well, what this would do, Ron, is that particular, we'll just say these ten people on that board, well, they're on their way out, they can see the door out there, and all of a sudden they come up, okay, well, the monies that are left here, we're gonna make a, uh, we're gonna make a, a donation to something else in the community, can't do that no more, because we put that, all dollars stay within that community, how that was raised.
Well, right now, I know for a fact Lottaway County Recreation, they went all cashless. Every kid now, every kid, I, I sat there watching concession, my grandson played foot, football over here this year. Every kid's got a phone now, and they got Venmo, they got Cash App, they got everything on that, I, I, I got three or four ways to pay for things on that phone. They go to concession stand, they tell them what they want, they lay their phone down there, they scan that phone, and it's paid for. They don't have to tote around the car, they, most of you kids nowadays don't even tote around any, a billfold. They got everything right there on their phone, they pay for everything right on their phone. My daughter, my daughter, my granddaughter, everything she buys is on PayPal or Venmo on her phone. When she runs a fundraiser for, uh, for, uh, oh, like the other day, she done won, can't, everybody, I, I, I say everybody, probably eighty percent of everybody that bought dinners paid for it on Venmo, right, they just sent, they sent the Venmo right to her phone, and, I mean, it's just, it's a, it, I don't, I, I'm still a, oh, I'm a dinosaur, I still pay cash and stuff like that, but I'm just telling you, these kids nowadays, everything's on their phone, and every kid's got a phone. I, I sat there and watched that concession stand over in Newbury the other day, and it's, it's, it's totally cashless, everything, they don't, they don't take any cash. And every kid that walked up there, laid their phone down there, they scanned that phone.
And unfortunately, Rocky, I have to agree to you, a lot of people go to that, but I'll just say, so I gotta ask the question to Poby, but Rocky, are you willing to go cashless and own your business?
No, I'm not, well.
But I'm not, but I've got a concession stand.
But the devil is with.
I understand, you're right.
Here's the thing about concession stands.
It's a lot harder to steal.
Lot of times you got kids up there that are ten years old, eight years old, working these concession stands, they don't know how to make correct change a lot of times, they lose money by not making correct change.
And we experienced that in the years I've been.
I, I did too, I have too, so they don't have to make change, all they gotta do is scan that phone, and, uh, really, it truly, there's a lot of, there's a lot of counties that's went to cashless because you can account for every dollar spent at that concession stand that way, every, every dollar spent. Ain't no way to, ain't no way that nobody put money in their pocket, ain't no way, every, every dollar spent is, it's, is, is accounted for, because it's on some kind of transaction.
One thing I do know, we did, Rocky, when we went to ESPN, uh, uh, tournament years ago, you could go to the concession stand and you could buy, you know, like if you're gonna be there for a week, but you could go to the concession stand and buy a fifty dollar thing that it give you, you give them the cash, and then every time you go up there for the rest of the week, like you do at Disney, you strap your car, that kind of deal. And, and, and. I don't know what a system like that costs, but could that be used?
And that accounted for everything, because you knew there was a fifty dollar, but, but I, I, I don't think, I think that's a no-brainer, if, if you don't go cashless and you're in it, you're not gonna keep up, you're not gonna keep up with it. I mean, I, I, I don't like cashless for the country, but, but with these kids and with the, and, and like you said, I get calls on bonds all the time, you got Cash App? No, I don't have that, you know, I don't. So, but, but that's the only way, the kids got it on their phone, like you said, they can, they can hand them the money right on their phone.
But there's a lot of kids, mom and daddy can't get them a phone either.
I don't know if anybody has a cell phone anymore. Even if they, but even if they do, they got a debit card, their mom.
That's what I was gonna say, if I go up there, I put my stuff, I put my stuff on credit card, because I didn't have it. But still, they'll take the credit card, you know what I'm saying, they'll still take.
Debit card, really, Cash App is nothing but a debit card, I mean, if you got a debit card, you can buy anything you want. It doesn't have to, you don't have to have Cash App and Venmo.
I, I, I'm gonna tell you what else too.
What'd you call it, Venmo?
Venmo.
Venmo, or whatever it's called.
I'm gonna tell you what else too, to buy tickets to the football games, you can't buy the ticket no more, how you walk up there.
Even with a check.
You can't buy it at the game, you have to order that ticket through PayPal or Venmo to have a ticket to the game before you get there. My daughter goes on there and gets all my, my leases tickets to the game, because they don't even take cash at the gate to get tickets. You walk up there, you buy it, they forward it to your phone, and you just show them your phone, and it's got your tickets on there. That, I mean, they, they have went to cash, no cash on everything.
And I think you can do it with a plain debit card too, because really, all Cash App is, is a debit card, so if you walk up there, you can pay with a debit card, so if you're trying to keep up with money, this is the way to do it, if you don't want to keep up with money, then use cash, because it's going.
You got, you got to look at it from, from a different standpoint too, with the crowd of people that we have, everybody not gonna be modernized to buy from the concession stand with the telephone, or what, so there's gonna be cash involved anyway.
Well, you, you're right, but like I say, most people's got a granddaughter or a daughter, they can, they, you can say.
Or debit card.
Give me tickets to that game, because that's what, I'll be honest with you, that's what I do, my daughter, I, I, she'll get us all the tickets and she'll text me my two, my, my wife's tickets to our phone, when we walk in, we just show them our phone, but.
Have you got a checking account?
Huh?
Have you got a checking account?
Oh, yeah.
I want you, I want you.
Well, even, it, it, we're, we're getting all caught up in the most, most coolest technology, I don't have a phone with Cash App on it. But what I'm saying is, if you got a debit card for your bank account, and I believe most people do, and if they don't need to go to get one, because it's easy, you just get a debit card, and you can use a debit card at those same places, you can use your phone, but you can also use a debit card, you just tap it, same as your phone.
Yeah.
You know?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Before Clint goes to sleep. What are your thoughts on all this?
Okay, well, a couple things, commissioners, um, boys' baseball here at Southside went cashless a year ago. At first, there was a bunch of controversy over it, people complaining, uh, they were calling our office, you know, y'all gotta stop this, well, we don't run that program, so that was, that was up to them. Reason they did it was for accountability. Girls softball, as y'all all know, had some issues this year with the changing of the guards and, you know, equipment was missing, money was supposedly missing, there was all kinds of accusations out there that we don't control, because we don't run those programs. They are currently, right now, also going to a cashless system. And it's happening all over the place, because our volunteer base that used to be there when all of you guys were involved is pretty much non-existent now. You've got a very small handful of people that volunteer their time to work those concessions and do what they need to do. So they're implementing practices now with the cashless systems and all that, so there is accountability. But on our end of it, what Joel and them, you know, were speaking to a minute ago, is a reimbursement or receipt system for the money that they get from us, what we call their seed money. When they receive that seed money, we give them that check in, you know, every quarter, when they request it. What we're trying to do is, okay, we hand them eight thousand dollars, we really don't know where they spend it on. They have turned in their sheet to Amy, met their qualification, showing their expenditures and what they brought in. But I can make y'all one of those sheets in about ten minutes on an Excel spreadsheet, there's still nothing to prove that that's really what happened. So the reason that we talked about that, of basically a reimbursement system, if we give you five thousand dollars, before you receive that cash, you're gonna give us invoices that we just bought catching gear and batting helmets and whatever the case may be. So you're getting reimbursed for the stuff that you put back into that program. That's why we kind of recommended that. But the, the cashless system, it's, it's already going that way out there now with several of the programs, but we also, we're, we're running that side with the volunteer base and actually working those concession stands, and who's working it, who's getting paid to work it, and who's not, and those organizations are having to handle that. But that's where the Health Department side kicks in, okay? The Health Department has come up now, these are county-owned buildings, so they're requiring somebody to be trained in that food service industry in those organizations, well, some of these five oh one C threes are not, they don't want to do that. They don't want to be, have that responsibility, because that person that's trained has to be on location whenever that concession stand's open. So we're running into things here that the county's gonna have to address in the near future. If we keep concession stands open, we got other avenues we gotta look at to justify that money we're giving them, or how are we gonna control the money that's coming in, based on what training we have to have for the people involved in that concession stand?
Clint, I hear.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we be hearing what Clint said, one of the volunteers have to be trained, wouldn't we better off to have to train someone through the county and let the five oh one C three Cs pay them to be there during, during the concession stand when they are open?
Well, I was told, now, I might be wrong on this, but I was told that soccer, that they went cashless, but they actually contract out the operation of their concession stand, is that correct?
Right, they're, they're working on a couple of things there, first of all, they're gonna contract out just the operation of the concession stand. Well, then at a couple of their events they had, they actually contracted with some, some food vendors, food trucks, basically. Now, we require them to have proof of insurance, background checks, and the whole nine yards in order to do that, but they're entered into a cost share deal, uh, you know, with those units. But they're entered into a cost share deal, uh, you know, with those units. So that gets them out of having to have the health department regulations and all because they're not prepping the food and and doing stuff in the concessions. Now, if they're serving sealed stuff, potato chips, you know, drinks and stuff like that, then they don't have to have that part of the health department. Um, so yes, soccer has gone to a cashless system and using some food vendors in order to handle their part of the concession.
Clint, it's a trigger for the uh food handling license, still hot dogs, hamburgers. Uh, anything cooked, popcorn.
Anything that they're having to touch and prep to package or whatever, they fill out that window.
That is not already pre-prepped, correct, okay, I I just remembered that. Because we even got kicked, if I remember right after, right before I let, on pickles, something as simple as pickles.
You're handling them, bringing them out of that jar, put them in a sleeve and hand them to that person, that falls under your, your handling that.
So when, so when they're grilling hamburgers and hot dogs and stuff, somebody's supposed to be there with a food license.
Right, and what Mr. Williams was alluding to, if we train somebody on our side. Where we run into an issue with that, because we've talked about it uh with Kevin and David and I. If you put a, our personnel out there, you got concessions open at every tournament. Well, you may have six concessions open during that tournament and one of them may be in Fort White. Well, during the week, you have league play, there's concessions open all over, everywhere.
So they gotta have one at every concession stand, a certified person at every concession stand.
But.
President on low, we, we could probably get by with one at Southside. To cover those concessions, they would have to be a roaming, you know, deal. But to have a person, you know, Fort White's gonna be playing games that night too with concessions open, so there's, there's really no way. One trained personnel on our side could handle what they require.
Well, maybe you have, could have more than one trained person.
But now, now, but let me, let me be clear, that wouldn't be paid for by us, that will be paid for by that five oh one C three. In other words, we're not gonna have employees out there working, doing.
No, I'm talking about being paid for by the five oh one three C, to have that person.
Okay, so the county employee wouldn't be being paid by the county, it'd be paying paid by the five oh one C three, okay.
Well. Yep. Yep. That's right.
Now, I wouldn't say I worked with an organization in the past couple of years that they were making money out of concessions. They made so much money out of concessions that they did not come to the allocation. That they did that because they didn't need it. They got burned for that, because they should have gotten it out of what you needed. So I don't see the point in putting that. You have to make sure that people are honest, maybe that's what you have agreed inviting them to. But that concession stand, that's, that's kind of nightmare, so I don't know how you can handle that, but. Best right of all the interviews, it's shrinking, it's shrinking every year. And they're looking for somebody that's organized that way. Now, we had that this year, and this bank status has done an excellent job with the first and community center, and all that aspects of concession. He failed, and we let the county sign involved, we, we ran the county during the basketball for the industry. That gives us information on that, and it worked out perfectly, we definitely have to produce some political relationships with the. Our volunteers and asking them to help.
Well, I, I, I say, Mario, I've heard stories. And most of what I'm dealing with is Fort White, but I've heard stories where. Some of the leagues would let uh travel ball teams come in and run the concession stands for them. And split the profits with them, for running the concession stand, they would split the profits with the travel ball teams, I mean, I've. I've heard stories where one group is left out owing Pepsi eleven, twelve thousand dollars, might be, I might be, I might be fourteen thousand, I can't remember the exact, no. It was thousands of dollars, owing Pepsi, with no money in the account, every time they leave, the account is dry and they have unpaid bills.
Yep.
And, you know, that's the kind of stuff that we've got to figure out something on to stop that, so. Uh, or, or, or what's gonna happen is, you know, you're gonna, you you're gonna have companies just don't deal with it. Because I think they were dealing with Pepsi, so they couldn't pay Pepsi, so then they're trying to sign the contract with Coke. Well, now if they don't pay Coke, who's who's gonna go to next, who's gonna say it just?
What, what's, Clint, you know more about it than anybody sitting here, what's the best way to make sure this doesn't happen anymore?
Well, as I spoke to David and Kevin, um, you know, if we had that liaison person similar like Swanee County does or whatever that heads up the concession stands. But there again, Swanee County is literally half the size or even smaller than what we are when you talk about number of concessions and all that. You could go that route, but you also create a snowball effect, and I discussed this with David and Kevin the other day. Right now, these leagues, that's, that's kind of their bread and butter is running that concession stand. Whether or not they're padding their own pockets or buying stuff for their league or whatever they're doing. If you take that part of the equation away from them and all they're supposed to be doing is helping put people in there and signing people up. Your volunteer base is gonna tell y'all, see you, y'all run all of it. Then you're in a situation where we don't have the staffing to register people, to set up a true recreation department, to run everything from A to Z.
Yeah, we don't have the money for that.
You know, no, we don't have the money for that, and and you're talking a major impact when you, Swanee County is as small as they are, there's five people sitting in that office over there. That does nothing but registrations and do all that, five people. That has nothing to do with the concessions or the the maintenance guys and providing facilities and all that. So for us to get into a full-fledged recreation type business, y'all are talking well over a million dollars just to get it set up.
Easily, easily.
That, that's, yeah.
So, but, you know, in, in the center and part to try to straighten this out, I think if we go to the receipt system. Like we discussed, basically reimbursing them, these folks all have plenty of money. In their accounts to do what they need to do in their program, and if they wanna buy a cashless system that costs thirty eight hundred dollars. And they want reimbursement from the county for their, their seed money, then they need to provide that receipt that they actually spent that money.
There you go.
It, 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 it works when, when a five oh one C three works that way. How many times have we had a community center come in and say, we need this piece of equipment, county, we'll pay for half of it. If you'll pay the other half, they put money back in the community center. Then that we should be doing, doing the same identical thing with these five oh one three Cs at the, at, at, in recreation. The same identical thing.
That's it, that's it.
Commissioners, right, right now, I've been here twenty five years. In the past four years, other than a case of sprinkler heads or a load of clay or something I've actually asked these leagues for. These leagues have not put a dime back into the facility.
It, don't make sense.
Yep.
So, you know.
That tells, that tells the whole story right there, Clint, it, it, it. And of course, we, Clint, we were far from perfect, but that was one of our goals, I mean, I remember. Us buying a lawnmower or something one time, but, but anyway, that's a. It's just reinvesting back in operation that you're participating in, it's a.
We're, we're fortunate, all the tournaments and stuff that we host, we set up accounts for tournament funds. And I control that through my budget on those line items, and Amy can tell you, there's good balances in all those accounts that we use. For repairs and upgrades and all of those facilities because we manage that money, we don't let the leagues get that. Because if they did, we'd be in the same situation with that.
Well, that liaison person, Clint, I feel like would definitely give us accountability. It be, you know, it gives you structure on the dollars, the cashless thing that y'all are alluding to, eh, eh, these people are still receiving their money. But upon receipt of whatever they're using it for, it's no more different than a qualified requisition. That the school system uses for one end of this county to the other, eh, but it does give accountability all the way around. That's why that liaison person, David, is so account, I mean, that's, that's a very important, uh. We had a lot of discussion about that at budget, and I, I, I think it's just that time, we've got to that, that size.
Clint, if you go to a cashless concession stand. And all that money that that concession stand made is accounted for. If they, if that league has to provide the county financial records, and I'm talking about when I say financial records, checks, checks, you know. You can see where the money spent and how much money was spent, and you can compare it to what was taken in. How would that work?
Well, I mean, in my opinion, they should be turning in. Whatever their bank statements and stuff are, where they deposited from that cashless system, they should have to turn that into the county if it was up to me.
And the cashless system, most of that, most of the time, that's direct deposit into the bank, so.
Right, but the majority of them, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, they're turning in a profit and loss sheet.
Which you can type up, I can type up one right now.
Don't, is there any reason why we can't make them give, show us our, their bank statement?
We already got it.
We do.
We've already got it, so I'm gonna read this out of the newly adopted model uh licensing agreement. The sports organization shall maintain a bank checking account for the majority of its business transactions. Cash payments shall be held to a minimum in order to provide a more accurate audit trail. The county, upon reasonable notice and it, and its own expense, shall have the right to inspect. And or audit the financial records of the sports organization at any reasonable time, so we can merely ask for their checkbook register. We're allowed to do it under our license agreement as it's currently drafted. We just, if we have any reason to be suspicious or concerned, tell them we want to do an inspection, not an audit, just an inspection.
Well, I, I think to get their money, they should do it quarterly.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, now, and, and, and there are, as, as Amy indicated, that's not all of it, there, there are quarterly reporting requirements, there's annual reporting requirements. Uh, it's a little different than what we do with community centers, which are annually and every five years. Sports organizations are always under that provision, I just read to you, you, at any time, Amy could say. We've had a report of an irregularity, we'd like to look at your checkbook.
Well, that way, when, 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 when a new president of the Bay comes to me and says, hey, you know. Somebody took thirty thousand dollars out of this county, and that's what just happened to me, somebody took thirty thousand dollars out of this county, it's gone, it's missing.
Yeah, let's see your check register.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that, that liaison position, that, that's, that's a good accountability. Checks and balances, and then when he checks it off or she checks it off, boom, here's the report, everything follows in line. Gives it to Amy, Amy reviews and puts it under her thing, this way, when a Tim Murphy comes in there and says, so, so, she simply picks it up. But right now, she's simply not able to pick up not much because they ain't being turned in the whole lot, because there's no accountability.
And if I can offer, with going to the reimbursement based system that, that Clint's talking about. The minute you have an unresolved irregularity, you're allowed to shift it back to the organization by saying you're not getting another reimbursement dime until this is rectified. So instead of it being on us to try to fix it, it's in their best interest to stay in compliance and fix irregular issues. Because they won't have access to the checkbook, when you're giving them a quarterly check regardless of what they've spent or earned. They really don't have an incentive to stay on top of their books.
Well, I knew with all the business minds in this room that we could come up with a solution to fix this problem.
I think this particular problem, y'all already fixed it, y'all fixed it a few months ago.
You got anything else to add, Clint? Oh, I have one comment card, Mr. Looker, you got something to say?
Hi, Clint.
Thank you, Clint.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's nice to be here this afternoon, and I'd like to thank you guys for using the microphone, it's easy to hear.
We getting that fixed.
Getting it, getting it. Uh, I've just sat here for the last, whatever it is, watching the talk about recreation, I'm confused. I mean, one thing is. These folks over here at Richardson and the other thing is county recreation and cash. It's pretty clear, I mean, one of the first people I met who's gone is when I came to this county, was Mario at Richardson. But this is a failed system, this system doesn't work. I started looking at this in two thousand and six, you guys still have no plan. You have no master plan, never tried to make one for Parks and Recreation, what you had for all these years is a master's plan. And contrary to what Commissioner Williams thinks, it didn't work, it worked because everybody just ignored Richardson. Until it couldn't be ignored anymore, and then everybody started paying attention, and this is where we are now. If you go to any community, you look in the civilized world of a, of a, of a community that's established, like Columbia County. They have a Parks and Recreation Department, called Parks and Recreation. Part of Parks and Recreation is the TDC because that's the bed tax, that's the beds, that's where people stay when they come to the community. But they have recreation departments that design recreation throughout the county. You're gonna need recreation in Fort White, you have it, you have a gigantic facility, yet you guys wanna compare that to Richardson. You got millions of dollars worth of fields in Fort White, everybody knows that, and you're constantly making good improvements. But until this county starts a Parks and Recreation Department. And listens to some of the things Mr. Pittman said, he's been here all these years. And, and starts getting involved in the way this stuff works, you're gonna have the same thing again year after year. You've got private vendors doing stuff, you have people that we're not gonna mention any names that were mentioned at, at this, at this. At this, where the board, that weren't paying sales tax. People being threatened, one day I'll go over my notes of Kelly Lowry, you paid a man almost a hundred thousand dollars to keep quiet. Because he was ready to expose what was going on in, in the recreation at Southside. I will go over those notes one of these days, and when I say that to Paula Vance, she says, oh, I don't like the sound of that. Uh, you guys need to get a plan, you don't plan anything, nothing. You see it here after, so I've been watching this since two thousand and six, it's two thousand and twenty three, I watched the meeting last night. You got a private board that wants to win Richardson, you got a recreation department, nobody knows where that is. Without a plan, this is nothing, and that's, that's what you need to do, you need a representative from various parts of the county sitting on a board. And you need to get a real Parks and Recreation Department, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
So. Where do we go from here, Mr. Chairman?
I, I think, uh, I, I think we, uh, basically enforce the contract that we have with, with five oh one C threes. I think we need to have a meeting with all of them, and I don't know, oh, maybe Joel and, uh. And Clint sat down with each one of them, explained how it's gonna, moving forward, this is how it's gonna be.
When we were formulating the, the new uh agreement, uh, we did try to facilitate some of those meetings, we had about fifty percent participation at the first meeting and. Maybe five percent at the second meeting.
They don't, when they get ready for some money, they don't show up.
I, I think probably the way.
They will show up.
To address it is to, uh, is to let them know that we're going to go to a, a, a reimbursement based dispersment system. That'll all be coordinated through Amy and make sure they understand that process, but also, as Commissioner Murphy's indicated a couple of times. It's really gonna be about, uh, whether it's Amy, whether it's another employee who's, who's responsible for coordinating this, it's gonna be about diligence. It's gonna be about staying on top of it, you know, really circling back, uh, minding these operations. Uh, and making sure they're compliant, I think Amy's been very good, um, if I can say so, uh, in, in, in staying on top of the reporting. But in top of the, the active monitoring and keeping your ear to the ground for complaints.
One other thing we have got to go ahead and, and, and start working on and addressing, Clint brought it to our attention just now. With these concession stands, we've got to figure out a solution to having somebody with a food degree. Uh, to work, to, to work at these concession stands, so. I, I think probably we need to start looking at that issue and figure out if we're going to. Continue operating concession stands like we're doing with somebody overseeing it. Uh, and maybe that liaison person that you're talking about oversees the five oh one C threes can get that degree also, and. Maybe some of the volunteers can get, get one, I, I don't know what's involved in getting that degree. Uh, but, uh, sounds, sounds like this is gonna be a, a problem moving forward, that we might as well start looking at and figure out how we're gonna address it.
This, this problem first came to, to my attention when we were having those meetings with all the different sports organizations. Um, and they expressed their concern about the health department compliance, and they didn't feel like they should really be responsible for that, since it wasn't really their building, made a lot of sense. That's when the CYSA representative, uh, Mr. Logan. He said, boy, what we do is a food truck and we love it because we don't have to worry about it, they come out to our event, they give some money back, a profit share. And so, you know, I think maybe an idea that staff should explore more deeply is either. You know, we take the food truck model and identify a vendor who's willing to do that for every event that's out there and share profits. you know, we take the food truck model and identify a vendor who's willing to do that for every event that's out there and share profits with every organization that runs an event out there. Or if we do something in-house with the county where we kinda follow the, but that food truck model seems to make sense. Cause it doesn't impose a large obligation on the volunteer base, uh, it keeps you compliant with your health department regulations, and it generates.